7:30 PM on Tuesday, March 10th, 2020. We're at the Twinsburg Government Center in the council chambers. I'd like to call the regular council meeting to session. Shannon, please call the roll.
Mr. Bellin?
I'm here.
Mr. Barr?
Here.
Mrs. Stoffer?
Here.
Mr. Fury?
Here.
Ms. McFerrin?
Here.
Mrs. Walker?
Here.
Mr. Scafidi?
All right, and now let's join Mr. Barr in the invocation and pledge allegiance.
Heavenly Father, we come to you today asking for your guidance, wisdom, and support as we begin this meeting. Help us to engage in meaningful discussion, allow us to grow closer as a group, and nurture the bonds of community. Fill us with your grace as we make decisions that affect all of our residents and businesses and our dedicated city employees. Bless those away from us serving to protect our country. We ask these things in your name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, next up is the approval of the minutes from the February 25th, 2020 meeting. Everybody have a chance to take a look at them?
Yes.
Any discussion? All right, I'll make a motion that the minutes are approved as written. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Ms. McFerrin, seconds. Shannon, please call the roll.
Mr. Bellin?
Yes.
Ms. McFerrin?
Yes.
Mrs. Walker?
Yes.
Mrs. Stoffer?
Yes.
Mr. Barr?
Yes.
Mr. Fury?
Yes.
All right, minutes are approved six to zero. Next is awards and presentations.
There are none.
Next is audience participation.
Yes, we have Sheila Williams.
Hello, everyone. I was happy to hear that Steve Bosco was down at the Health Department today. I received a memo this afternoon talking about there was a special meeting for elected officials. I didn't get it till late and I already had a commitment, so I was happy to hear that he was down there and he brought you up to date with that. And this coronavirus is a little serious, so I hope that people will pay attention and do some of the things that we're suggesting, some of the things that I hear the National Health Department talking about in CDC. And the biggest thing is, don't put yourself in harm's way. You know, if you're over 60 and you have pre-existing conditions and things like that, you might not want to go to a MAC game, or you might not want to go to even a restaurant. And it sounds kind of scary, but if you already have somewhat of a compromised situation, you kind of want to pay attention. And I'm gonna leave that alone, because she said he covered it real well. I want to talk about Kent State. I'm going to do part of it, and Ms. Stoffer's going to do the other part. We had a master plan meeting on Monday, and it's with a group called the Smith Group, and the presentation was given by Kevin King and Ron Hoffman. And what Kent State has done is, they're looking at all of the regional campuses, along with the main campus, trying to come up with a master plan that's consistent and cohesive with all of the campuses. There were questionnaires that went out, and so they were giving us a report on it. It was very interesting, because Twinsburg is like a shining star up on that hill. We have over 900 students here. And one of the things, the questions that was asked was, do you feel you need housing? Like a small dormitory or something to that effect? And the answer was no. You know, we have adult population commuters, CCP students coming from the high school, but they didn't feel as though, when they answered the questionnaire, that we might need housing for them. Same thing at the Geogu Campus. So I thought that was interesting. I think only one of the regional campuses, I want to say Star Testeroris, are looking at maybe doing a little bit of housing. I'm going to look down these notes and tell you that the biggest thing is branding. I don't know if you've seen some of the Kent State commercials, but they're trying to do a branding that runs right across. And they had five goals: student first, distinction, how are we different from everyone else? Is KSU global? We want to be more global. And they're looking at our regionals. And as we're looking at this, a couple of things are going on here. The Geogu campuses have what they consider flat enrollment. They're only like at 407. In the master plan, you know, there is a new high school, or K-12 building. It's not just a new high school, a K-12 building going on Kent State property in Burton. They're working on it. They finally got in the waters and sewer lines and different things that were kind of holding them up straight. And so it's kind of moving full steam ahead now. Well, the flat is part of what helps determine construction on both sides, whether the high school, the K-12 building, is accommodating 2,500, whatever the number might be. And the same thing with the Burton campus, what they were going to do. And I want to say that Dean Moeen, who's deceased now, he took care of that property. It is an old facility out there, but they even ranked good when they looked at the physical appearances. And of all of the campuses, we are the only ones that's going to get new construction. And that's kind of nice, when you think about it in the bigger picture. We are eight years old. It's been in the community about 12 to 14 years, starting at Chrysler, then going to the old school, and then the new construction. Well, in the eight years that the new building has been there, we've outgrown it. And so they're looking at a two-story facility. The timeline on that is March-April. They're going to try to finalize this master report that they're going to give to the Board of Trustees. May, the report preparation, and then June will be a presentation. The board is going to vote on all of the campuses, not just ours or Burton's. It will be, some will get painting, carpeting, things like that. Others will get outside face look, like at Burton. They want to do something in the front of Burton where you know that it's a college campus. With us, we're looking at expanding into a two-story that's to the, when you pull up in the driveway, to the left going towards Gander Mountain. So you would come out of that door on the first floor, and they're looking at a construction. It's about 40,000 gross square feet. So it's a good-sized building. One of the other things that came out of this master plan is they're looking at it. It is a living document, so we can change. If we find that we're busting at the seams, we may have to expand the building even bigger. So this is a changeable document. And they're doing something, this new 21st century education called learning common areas versus libraries. These kids are so high-tech, they're not using the library like all of us used to go and do all the research. And I understood what you said, when you said that. But we are interlinked through our library across the street, so a lot of the kids that go to classes at Kent State do go over there. But they need these learning common areas that will have like a community room, an unofficial like little cafeteria, places where they can do computer lab work. And that seems to be the big push as we're looking at doing this. And it's more of an informal type of learning environment in a lot of different ways. So it was a very interesting meeting in the sense that the master plan has been ongoing and evolving, and now we're really starting to see it go from here, coming in this way. I don't know what the consent agenda will be in June, but I'm sure there'll be some type of announcement as to what they're doing to all of the campuses. And like I said, it's a branding for them. They want to make sure that wherever you are, if it's a KSU campus, it's consistent. So that was the one thing. And then the big thing, before I left the house, Kent State has canceled all classes effective at 4:25 today. I don't know if it's been on TV or not.
It was.
Okay, it was. And they're going to be doing remote classes. Faculty and staff will be there for student assistance if a student really needs something, or they need to do whatever they need to do. But the campus, all campuses, will be closed because of this coronavirus to protect the students. And it will reopen on April 13th. So, spring break starts, I think, next week for them. And so it's not too bad, but still, that was a shocker when I saw that email before I left out this evening. So I wanted to make sure that if you hadn't seen it on the news, that you were aware of it. And then I have a resident question. I have one, two, three, four streetlights. When you turn down Eaton Drive, it's still not working yet. We still have no lights there.
You're talking about off 91?
Yeah.
You're talking about off 91?
The overhead streetlight?
Yeah, the overhead streetlights. The poles are there.
Right.
But we still have no power.
Right. And Amy has addressed that. Yeah, yeah, they're still working on this, but we need to do something about it.
We have any idea where we might be looking at something, or close to it?
Yeah.
I mean, it's dark.
Yeah.
When you turn that corner, it is very dark right there at Eaton and 91.
Right, right. And I know that there was an email sent out from Amy addressing that, but we'll keep talking to her about that.
Okay.
And see if somebody can... David, is there anything we can do from her?
She's talking about Eaton's Drive.
Eaton's Drive?
Yeah, I think she...
I think the email was...
The black pole lights that are there.
On 91.
And the reflectors on the road. I would add that. Ohio Edison, well, we are working with Ohio Edison for additional overhead lighting in the area. Amy's aware of it, I know that.
We can follow up with her in the morning, make sure that whoever our contact is...
Yeah, because, I mean, the poles are there, because before it was, we didn't have any poles or anything there. But we've had poles there at least three to four weeks.
Yeah, we dealt with similar situation on the Meadowwood side, where the poles were there for six or eight weeks.
Yeah.
And then we were just waiting for Ohio Edison to come through. I don't remember what the issue is on the Eaton side, but... Yeah, we can, we'll follow it.
Right, and it says there was a request made on 1/17/2020, so I don't know how long we wait for them to respond, David.
Yeah, I'll follow up with Amy in the morning.
Okay, well, somebody, just let me know. I'd appreciate it.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Ms. Williams. Next?
There's none.
All right, next we're on to council communications and reports. Ms. McFerrin?
So I was at the Architectural Review Board on March 5th. There were several cases. Case 2003-23, 2198 East Enterprise Parkway Shelter Insurance, a wall sign was approved. Case 2003-24, 8797 Maryville Drive, a new single-family dwelling, Ryan Holmes, was approved. Case 2003-25, 8867 Maryville, a new single-family dwelling, Ryan Holmes, was approved. Case 2003-26, 1999 Enterprise Parkway, Pepsi Cola Driving, Driver's Building, construction was approved. Case 2003-27, 3027 Wyatt's Way, a new single-family dwelling with Pulte Homes was approved. And case 190994, 9422 Darrow Road, single-family, multifamily housing units, Wilcox Metals was approved. The next meeting for ARB will be on March 19th. I did attend the safety meeting tonight, which I believe Ms. Walker's going to provide an update on. The Goth Advisory Board next meeting was scheduled for 3/17. Are we still keeping the date, or are we scheduling it?
Being rescheduled, but no date.
Okay, so being rescheduled, no date yet. And I also attended tonight's final meeting. That's all I have.
Thank you, Ms. McFerrin. Mr. Fury?
Thank you. I did not have any meetings since the last council meeting, or any committee meetings since the last council meeting. The next Board of Zoning Appeals will be on 3/11 at 6:30. They'll have on the agenda a variance request for Circle K on a sideyard setback. Twinsburg's Tax Review Committee will meet on 3/18 at 4:30. That's where we review all the top and CRA agreements. And the CIC will meet on 4/6. Next week, St. Patrick's Day on Tuesday. A&amp;M will have a limited Irish menu on Tuesday, so if you want to have lunch or dinner and traditional Irish food, please go to our restaurant down at the Gulf Coast. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Fury. Mrs. Walker?
Good evening, everyone. My Twins Days Committee met last Wednesday. We're working to make this event another special one, as always, and we are looking for volunteers. So go on the website, look under twinsdays.com, and put your name down if you're interested, or if you know of any Twins. Also, the public safety, we met today, and I'll just share just a little something with you, and I'm sure Chief Morgan would like to give us more of an update. But he talked about the upgrades of the fire station, the staffing, part-time personnel, and upcoming retirement. And he also talked about getting grants for the fire department, for the fire department. Yes, that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Walker. Mrs. Stoffer?
Okay. Well, I've had quite a few meetings since our last council meeting. We had the A&amp;M Subcommittee meeting last week. We'll have another one tomorrow, so we're working on some suggestions and ideas for Aaron and Moses. I had attended the CIC meeting last week. The next meeting will be April 6th. The Environmental Commission met on April 7th. They had quite a bit to share, so I'm just going to give you a little bit of information. One of them is the sixth, this is actually part of the Garden Club, the Sixth Annual Native Plants Gardening with a Purpose Workshop is Saturday, May 16th, from 9:00 AM to 4:00 PM at the Twinsburg Community Center. Registration and vendor sales begin at 9 o'clock. You can take a look, check out www.twinsburg-garden club.com for more information on that. There's also a backyard conservation and the 50% Project on Sunday, March 22nd, from 2:00 to 4:00. These are some events that they wanted me to share. Earth Day on April 18th, 12:00 to 4:00, up at the Liberty Park, right at Liberty Nature Center. They've got quite a few events planned for that. So I think it'd be worth it to go out and check it out. I'll report, I'll be able to report on that again before Earth Day. That's all I'm going to report on now for the Environmental Commission. I did meet, go to the academic advising, I'm part of the academic advising board. I think that Sheila did a good job reporting on that. There are, the attended, there have been 426 applications for fall enrollment. This academic center is a gem, I'm telling you. If you haven't taken a look or taken advantage of it, go and take a look at www.kent.edu Geogu calendar. There are a bunch of events coming up that I think a lot of people may be interested in, the May 4th event. But they also have a calendar of events that's just full of opportunities for Twinsburg residents and other residents to attend. Let's see, I think that is all I have for the advisory committee. I feel like I'm just swamped with so many different meetings. I attended the Safety Committee, the Finance Committee. Community Relations will meet on Thursday, March 19th. And I think that's all I have.
Thank you, Mrs. Stoffer. Mr. Barr?
Thank you, Mr. Bellin. Good evening. As a member of the Safety Committee, Ms. Walker, thank you. Congratulations on being nominated Chair.
Thank you.
And thank you for your report. I did have just one item I wanted to add to that. We've been working with the Public Works, Chris Campbell and City Engineer Amy Moore, to try and get a flashing yellow indicator at the crosswalk at Neely Lane in Liberty. And just happy to report that that is progressing. We're getting some bids from Ohio Edison. I know they're pricing up some equipment and some other things like that. So hopefully for those inquiring minds, we will see some, see some progress on that here over the upcoming months. The Finance Committee this evening had just a very brief meeting, basically to make a couple of permanent updates to the 2020 Appropriations Budget Bill. Rest assured, we didn't spend any more money. We just moved some things around from an accounting standpoint to make life a little bit easier, to keep track of some of our special events. And also, with Mr. Fury's help, we're trying to earmark some of our money from our Parks and Rec budget into some permanent lighting for the holiday season, something that we could use season after season after season. And again, that's just in an effort to be more financially responsible and to decrease our costs, and at the same time, not minimize what is just always such a great event. I mean, we really, really enjoy that holiday lighting camp. The next meeting of the Finance Committee is scheduled for March 24th, 2020, here in Council Chambers. That'll be at 6:00 PM. I'd just also like to add that council will be meeting with the state auditors later this week. We should be looking forward to hearing some of the results of that. I believe that's one of our last few meetings with them, so hopefully we'll have a little bit more information, and we'll all be able to share that. Those have been some really informative meetings thus far. I believe that is all I have, and that's it for me. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Barr. Let's see, I'm going to report for Mr. Scafidi, who's not with us this evening. The Parks and Rec Committee met on February 27th. Just going to read you a couple of notes here. The Committee is continuing to meet monthly to, I'm sorry, the Friends of the Twinsburg Park Committee is continuing to meet monthly to discuss increased awareness and membership renewals. The Friends of the Twinsburg Park is partnering with several community members to support a project to enhance the safety town, physical structures at the community center. The Friends of the Twinsburg Park wanted to extend a huge thank you to Councilwoman Joanne McFerrin for all of her support and advocacy throughout this year. She held several fundraisers and donated over $1,500 raise, so thank you very much. I know they appreciate it. And they're also working on a Uker Tournament fundraisers, with more details to follow. The next Parks and Rec meeting will be held on Thursday, April 23rd, 6:30 PM, here in Council Chambers. The first planning-commissioning meeting of this year will be held on Monday, March 16th, 7:00 PM, here in Council Chambers. So that concludes Mr. Scafidi's report. I actually attended the Pancake Breakfast on Saturday. According to the bulletin, more than 600 people came to the high school to check out the 2020 Twinsburg In Search of Show Expo, the Blue Ribbon Schools Pancake Breakfast, and the PTA Community Carnival. If you've never been to this event, it was really awesome. There's a ton of people there. I would highly recommend in the future. Also attended this evening's Finance Committee meeting and Safety Committee meeting. And again, we will have our state auditor meeting on Thursday, March 12th. The next Finance Committee meeting will be held on Tuesday, March 24th, 6:00 PM, here in Council Chambers. Nothing further for me this evening. We have no mayor's reports, because the mayor's not with us this evening. Mr. Maitre, do you want to add anything in lieu of the mayor's report?
No, we didn't have an opportunity to put anything together, so really, there's nothing to add. Thank you.
Are there any council, or department heads that are reporting this evening? Mr. Campbell?
Good evening, council. Well, the Service Department is moving along its, within its winter operations. Snow and ice, we have responded to 18 snow and ice events, which is quite a bit lower than we normally do. We're in the mid-30s by now. We have used 3,379 tons of salt. We're committed for 4,500, so I'm hoping for a little bit more snow.
How much can we store?
We can, we've got about, we can store 2,000 tons. I can send about 500 tons over to our wastewater plant. We've got a concrete structure over there. So we need to use about 800 tons. So if it, suffice it to say that if it snows again, our streets will be running water.
We'll go have schools, what you're saying.
So, yeah, salt will not be a problem. We are scheduled, we have the crew scheduled to come back from those winter operations on Monday, March 30th. So in the meantime, between now and March 30th, we're trying to finish up. We were able to tackle a bunch of building upgrade projects. In fact, we've got a crew here in City Hall tonight doing some painting. So we were able to work in City Hall, the Fire Department, Police Department. We actually did a, we actually did an office in Public Works, which is kind of a first for us, our mechanics office. So we did that, and so they're finishing that up. Kind of along that same thought, the road maintenance potholes, they've patched 807 potholes, which sounds like a lot, but it's a lot less than we have been dealing with, usually in the thousands. So roads are in really good shape, so that's helping us.
Chris, is that number directly related to the number of snow events we have typically?
It's, it's more related to the freeze-thaw cycle.
Freeze and thaw, okay.
Yeah, so the temperature has been a little more moderate, you know, so. And really, you know, the work that's being done in the road program. I mean, we've had some really tough roads that have gotten resurfaced in the, you know, so that helps. So looking forward to coming back to day shift, we will resume branch chipping on Monday, April 6th. We have crack sealing scheduled. Crack sealing's a little bit of weather dependence, so we're hoping by the end of April, beginning of May, to get crack sealing going. Street sweeping, soon as we feel that there's no more salt on the road, we'll send the street sweeper out. And then the plan for hydrants, which will probably come a little bit later in the, in the season, probably June, July, we're going to try to finish up all of the hydrants that haven't been painted. And then we're going to double back and some of the, we're going to start changing the green ones over to red. So we're going to hit Ravenna Road initially, and then some of the other high-profile areas. The paint's holding up really well. The process we've got is working really well, so we just want to get those changed over to the red, and we should be in good shape. So that's our plans at this point.
Thank you. Hey, Chris, I wanted to thank you, this last meeting, I think you had ducked out. Thank you for the, taking care of that no-through-street sign for the resident over on, where were they? Pine Tree Lane?
Yes.
Appreciate it. Thank you very much. And thank you too for, within Corbett's, for fixing that sinkhole. I appreciate it.
Oh, excellent. Thank you.
Yeah, that one I was real worried about, just because, you know, there's so many kids in through there, and it was pretty deep.
Yeah, yeah. So, yeah, it worked out. We were able to actually identify why it happened.
Perfect.
And then we broke it further, so they were able to fix it.
Hey, Chris, I have one, Chris, I have a quick question for you. Do we have, who does our training for stormwater cleanup? Do we have a company that does that training for stormwater cleanup?
Stormwater cleanup?
Yeah, that was a question from someone at the Environmental Committee, and I thought, well, just...
Stormwater cleanup, I'm not sure I understand.
It says, who does training for stormwater cleanup? One of them, I'll verify.
Yeah, with stormwater, we actually have some in-house, you know, we have some requirements through Amy's permitting program. And we gained some education from the Summit County.
Okay, so it's Summit County?
We have a few people that go down there. And then anytime the watershed group, if they have any training, we grab some of that, so.
Okay, so basically, we just do kind of in-house?
We don't have a, you know, one specific place that we go, but there's several.
Okay. And this may not be in your area, but if there are streetlights burned out in the city, is that something that's reported to Public Works?
On occasion, there are. So it's kind of weird with Ohio Edison, when you report an outage, when you call that in, they need an address. And sometimes they ask for an account number, which makes it really difficult for us, because they want that account information. Somehow they tie it in together. What we've, we've gotten recently, and I think, I think we received it from the Building Department, we have a form to fax in, and that's been going well for us. So we're able to do that. We've had some good results with that. But if a resident, until recently, if a resident called in, it was tough for us, because they wanted so much information at Ohio Edison. But recently, we've started to fax in some of those requests, and we've gotten some response from them.
So a resident couldn't just call in and say, okay, I live on Lumen Lane, and we have streetlights out on that lane. I have to give the address that...
Yeah, they need the exact address.
The exact address. They couldn't find it just driving down.
Yeah. Yeah, if they don't provide it, then we'll have to go out and find it, but...
So the, so the homeowners then are responsible for reporting the outage?
It, it's much easier.
Okay.
Yeah, because, because of the information Ohio Edison wants.
And then what about the common areas?
We would, we would do that.
Those, okay. So if we were to just report, okay, the lights are out on Eaton's Drive, lights burned out, that could, that would just be a general request from the city then?
Yeah, and then I'll try to have to, I'll have to try to put an address to it. You know, I'll just go to the map and see if I can get an address.
So you'd go to the back of those homes, or the condos, or wherever they, okay?
Right, yeah. Yeah, they, they tend to want specific information.
Yeah, yeah. I do remember calling in once, and they asked the address. I was driving by when I saw the light going.
Yeah, with this fax form we have now, it seems to be helping too.
Okay, thank you.
All righty.
Chris, would that include a power outage? Is that what you would call that?
Well, power outage, you would call Ohio Edison for that.
Okay, because in the, in the packet that Shannon just gave us, the new resident packet, it has it here about... it has it here about powder outages, and it says, do not call the Police Department. There's a number for Ohio Edison. So it's in the packet that Shannon just gave us today.
And I'm sending you guys a link. There's the number online. You can report the outage right online if you're a resident.
Okay.
Thanks, Chris.
Alrighty.
Good evening, chief.
Good evening.
Hello, chief.
Hello.
So for the month of February, the Fire Department responded to 249 calls for service. That brings us up to 519 for the year, which is 10% of last year, 10% ahead of last year's pace. A couple notable events, on the, the 8th of February, we had a fire at Taco Bell. It was most likely intentionally set. We are investigating, but Taco Bell's closer TV system was not working. So, you know, it's, it's pretty hard to, to get someone to give us the right information. So we are working in cooperation with the Detective Bureau to continue to press the issue, but it's still under investigation. And on the 17th, we did have the house fire on Gettysburg, and fortunately, we were, there was no one home at the time. We were able to put the fire out fairly quickly, but there was still significant damage to the, the lower floor of the house, and fire-wise, and then smoke and heat throughout the rest of the house. We got assistance from Macedonia and Oakwood Fire Departments on that, as well as Hudson EMS. And the cause of that fire is under investigation as well. And finally, on the 24th, we had a rollover accident on I-480 at the 38.8 mile marker. The vehicle rolled several times, and, but the driver was able to get out unharmed, just some minor scratches. And you may have saw, may have seen the, the press that it got, and the, the social media attention that it got. Just a reminder that to wear your seatbelts is best practice.
Fire Prevention Bureau completed 14 investigations, I'm sorry, inspections during the course of the month, and also worked on eight fire investigations, and completed 52 hours of public education, contacting over 100 people. We also completed 85 training sessions totaling almost 500 hours of training. Under points of interest, the weather warning siren system was tested on the 7th, and they all functioned properly, although there was one where the indicator light didn't work after the fact, so that, that'll be addressed. And that concludes my report at this time. I'm sorry, Mrs. Walker did mention that we do have a retirement coming up, the first part of April, that Jack Lewis is going to be retiring, but we are in a position where we do have his replacement prepared to start the week prior to that, so there should be not, shouldn't be a breach in the staffing at that point, so that's my report. Chief, is there 10% over last year? Do you have any indication, is that consistent with other areas, you know, Solon and Aurora, or is that specific to Twinsburg? Any, any thoughts on why that, why that is?
It, it's hard to tell at this point. It's still early in the year. It's hard to tell whether that's going to be a trend, or if it was just a spike, and, you know, with the current state of affairs, who knows where things might go with that. But I can't tell you.
Okay, that's just Chris. Thank you.
I have something. I just wanted to thank both you and Assistant Chief Basso for working with the schools yesterday, and for Steve's presentation to council tonight. So thank you.
And I just want to reiterate on that point, the schools, even before this most current event, you know, dawned upon us, that they were really being aggressive about their disinfecting and cleaning procedures at the schools, just to address the flu issue. And Mrs. Powers has indicated that it's, it's, it's had results, and just lower amount of absences, just regular seasonal absences, is a result of their cleaning effort. So kudos to them for being ahead of the game.
Right. Well, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Mr. Finch?
Thank you. Good evening, council.
Evening.
Good evening.
A couple of items. There are two items on the council's agenda tonight, from the economic development perspective. Item 182020, there's a top agreement for Chemoplastics will be relocating and consolidating individuals from Kirkland to Twinsburg, and bringing an additional $600,000 worth of payroll to the city of Twinsburg. Item 202020 is an assignment of an existing CRA agreement from Twinsburg Industrial Properties to a, one entity that will own the entire property now, 8745 Chamberlain Road LLC. As what has been mentioned, there'll be a tax incentive review council meeting on the 18th at 4:30 here in the jury room. We've received all the reports from the companies who have benefited from various incentives. We're right now verifying the income information, and we'll have all the information ready to go for the meeting on the 18th. An agenda's already been distributed to the members of the, of the review council. The CIC has a request for qualifications out for a developer partner for redevelopment of the 9.6 acres of property adjacent to Darrow Road on the east side of Darrow in central Twinsburg, what we're referring to as the southeast quadrant. Those responses will be due by May 1st. At that time, we'll shortlist four proposals based on qualifications, and, and move on from there. Council will be receiving signed regulations probably at the next meeting, so be prepared for fun reading. We're just making some final, quick, quick reviews. The mayor wanted to take, take a final look at it before we send it to council, so you'll get it at the next meeting. We're also going to be starting the comprehensive plan update, and we'll be looking for a couple of members to participate in a comprehensive plan committee. Be looking for a representative or two from council, and we'll be looking for a couple of resident representatives as well. And that's my report for tonight.
Thank you, Larry. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mrs. Butcherus?
Good evening, council. Interest earnings through the end of February were at a little above $30,000. Last year, we were a little above $20,000, so that's up about almost 50% over last year. We're probably not going to be able to maintain. You've probably all seen the news and the markets. We are going to invest that million dollars that we have extra into Star Ohio. Star Ohio is still at a 1.23. I had a discussion with our investment manager yesterday that that's probably the best we're going to do right now with the current situation. Hopefully, it gets a little better here soon. In finance, we're starting to work on the 2019 GAAP conversion, where we essentially go from cash to accrual, so that we have the financial statements for the auditors to come in and look at. We are going to try to do the comprehensive annual financial report this year. It's a little bigger, a little more data, and I think it'll help us in our bond issue this year to have that type of report. We're working on the February close as well. We're hoping to get that out next week. Permanent budget, we'll have those changes that we talked about tonight on the third reading, and then wrapping up the performance audit with those last few meetings. So that's what we've got going on.
All right. Thank you. All right, next up is legislation. First is Ordinance 162020.
The permanent appropriation ordinance for 2020 approved by council from estimates submitted by the mayor, providing for the ordinary expenses and other necessary expenses of the city of Twinsburg, Ohio during the fiscal year ending December 31st, 2020.
That is its second reading. Resolution 182020?
A resolution authorizing the mayor to enter into an agreement with Chemoplastics Group to provide tax incentives under the terms and conditions of the Twinsburg occupancy program.
I'd like to make a motion to adopt Resolution 1820. May I have a second?
I'll second.
Ms. McPherson, seconds. Discussion?
This is a top agreement. The company is bringing $600,000 in payroll from Kirkland. We're giving three years on their current lease, and 50% of the new income tax abatement coming in. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Shannon, please call the roll.
Mr. Bellin?
Yes.
Ms. McPherson?
Yes.
Mrs. Walker?
Yes.
Mr. Barr?
Yes.
Mrs. Stoffer?
Yes.
Mr. Fury?
Yes.
Resolution 182020 passes six to zero. Next up is Ordinance 192020.
An ordinance authorizing the purchase of vehicles and equipment for use by the Service and Engineering Departments as previously approved through the capital improvement budget and declaring an emergency.
I'd like to make a motion to put Ordinance 192020 on its third and final reading and declare an emergency. May I have a second?
I'll second.
Mrs. Stoffer, seconds. Discussion?
The reason for the emergency is we need to get vehicles as quickly as possible for the price increase.
Any further discussion? Shannon, please call the roll.
Mr. Bellin?
Yes.
Mrs. Stoffer?
Yes.
Mr. Fury?
Yes.
Ms. McPherson?
Yes.
Mr. Barr?
Yes.
Mrs. Walker?
Yes.
Emergency clause passes six to zero. Now I'd like to make a motion to adopt Ordinance 192020 as an emergency. May I have a second?
I second.
Mrs. Walker, seconds. Discussion?
There are, there are four vehicles. There's one van, one crew cab, one pickup truck, and one F-550. Anything else? Shannon, please call the roll.
Mr. Bellin?
Yes.
Mrs. Walker?
Yes.
Mr. Barr?
Yes.
Ms. McPherson?
Yes.
Mr. Fury?
Yes.
Mrs. Stoffer?
Yes.
Ordinance 192020 passes six, zero as an emergency. Next up is Resolution 202020.
A resolution authorizing the mayor to enter into an assignment and assumption of the CRA agreement from Twinsburg Industrial Properties LLC to 8745 Chamberlain Road LLC.
I'd like to make a motion to adopt Resolution 202020. May I have a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Fury, seconds. Discussion?
Purpose of this ordinance is, this star, we had this agreement, changed their name to Industrial Properties LLC, which is simply a administrative change, which is nothing new.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Shannon, please call the roll.
Mr. Bellin?
Yes.
Mr. Fury?
Yes.
Ms. McPherson?
Yes.
Mrs. Stoffer?
Yes.
Mr. Wa, Mrs. Walker?
Yes.
Mr. Barr?
Yes.
Resolution 202020 passes six to zero. Next up is Ordinance 212020.
An ordinance amending Section 147 of the Codified Ordinances of the City of Twinsburg regarding employees generally.
And that's its first reading. Next up is Resolution 222020.
A resolution appointing two members to the Architectural Review Board.
I'd like to make a motion to adopt Resolution 222020. May I have a second?
I have a question.
Yes.
So we actually have three openings, and when I looked at the Resolution 272020 for Parks and Rec, you actually have blank lines there, but we don't have that on the Architectural Review Board?
Correct. I have since corrected that, so we don't want to have blank lines on the legislation. I had this conversation with Mr. Maestros earlier, so that's, that one was corrected.
Okay. I just want to make sure. Thank you.
Good. May I have a second?
I'll second.
Ms. McPherson, seconds. Discussion?
It's a resolution appointing Don Spice and Jennifer Frazier to the Architectural Review Board.
Shannon, please call the roll.
Mr. Bellin?
Yes.
Ms. McPherson?
Yes.
Mr. Fury?
Yes.
Mrs. Walker?
Yes.
Mr. Barr?
Yes.
Mrs. Stoffer?
Yes.
Resolution 222020 passes six to zero. Next up is Resolution 232020.
A resolution appointing two members to the Board of Building and Zoning Code Appeals.
I'd like to make a motion to adopt Resolution 232020. May I have a second?
I'll second.
Are you?
Mr. Fury, seconds. Oh, Mrs. Stoffer, I'm sorry. Mrs. Stoffer, seconds. Discussion?
This is a resolution appointing Gary Willner and Ed Kansler to the Board of Zoning Appeals.
Any further discussion? Shannon, please call the roll.
Mr. Bellin?
Yes.
Mrs. Stoffer?
Yes.
Mr. Fury?
Yes.
Mrs. Walker?
Yes.
Mr. Barr?
Yes.
Ms. McPherson?
Yes.
Resolution 232020 passes six to zero. Next up is Resolution 242020.
A resolution appointing one member to the Civil Service Commission.
I'd like to make a motion to adopt Resolution 242020. May I have a second?
I second.
Mrs. Walker, seconds. Discussion?
This is a resolution appointing Paul Neese to the Civil Service Commission.
Shannon, please call the roll.
Mr. Bellin?
Yes.
Mrs. Walker?
Yes.
Mrs. Stoffer?
Yes.
Mr. Barr?
Yes.
Ms. McPherson?
Yes.
Mr. Fury?
Yes.
Resolution 242020 passes six to zero. Next up is Resolution 252020.
A resolution appointing four members to the Environmental Commission.
I'd like to make a motion to adopt Resolution 252020. May I have a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Barr, seconds. Discussion?
This is a resolution appointing Chuck Benacci, Michael Shuler, Jennifer Coe, and Louis Elton to the Environmental Commission.
Shannon, please call the roll.
Mr. Bellin?
Yes.
Mr. Barr?
Yes.
Mrs. Walker?
Yes.
Ms. McPherson?
Yes.
Mrs. Stoffer?
Yes.
Mr. Fury?
Yes.
Resolution 252020 passes six to zero. Next up is Resolution 262020.
A resolution appointing seven resident members to the Glen Eagles Advisory Board.
I'd like to make a motion to adopt Resolution 262020. May I have a second, please?
I'll second.
Ms. McPherson, seconds. Discussion?
So this is to add Andrew Chenkis, Lisa Rosenthal, John MacArthur, Greg Ral, Sanita Mutter, Tricia Fredel, and Tom Warmer to the Gulf Advisory Board for this year.
Thank you.
And through 3/31/22.
Thank you. Shannon, please call the roll.
Mr. Mr. Bellin?
Yes.
Ms. McPherson?
Yes.
Mr. Barr?
Yes.
Mrs. Stoffer?
Yes.
Mr. Fury?
Yes.
Mrs. Walker?
Yes.
Resolution 262020 passes six to zero. Next up is Resolution 272020.
A resolution appointing one member to the Parks and Rec Commission.
I'd like to make a motion to adopt Resolution 272020. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Fury, seconds. Discussion?
It's a resolution appointing Niall McKenna to Parks and Rec.
We're still searching for two more.
Right, still, yeah.
Two more on a team.
Ward four.
Two more on a team.
Two more in a team, Ward four, Ward five, the team representative, which is not more specific. Shannon, please call the roll.
Mr. Bellin?
Yes.
Mr. Fury?
Yes.
Mrs. Stoffer?
Yes.
Mrs. Walker?
Yes.
Mr. Barr?
Yes.
Ms. McPherson?
Yes.
Resolution 272020 passes six to zero. Finally, is Resolution 282020.
A resolution appointing three members to the Planning Commission.
I'd like to make a motion to adopt Resolution 282020. May I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Barr, seconds. Discussion?
It's a resolution appointing David Kleiman, Mark Cohen, and Steve Shebeck to the Planning Commission.
Shannon, please call the roll.
Mr. Bellin?
Yes.
Mr. Barr?
Yes.
Mr. Fury?
Yes.
Mrs. Walker?
Yes.
Ms. McPherson?
Yeah.
Mrs. Stoffer?
Yes.
Resolution 282020 passes six to zero. Next up is unfinished business, new business, and miscellaneous. Ms. McPherson?
I just would like to wish everyone a happy St. Patrick's Day on March 17th.
Thank you. Mr. Fury?
Ditto.
Thank you. Mrs. Walker?
Ditto.
Thank you. Mrs. Stoffer?
I guess I need to say ditto, but I also want to thank our.
You could say mega ditto.
Mega ditto. I'd like to thank our committee members, those who have served, who have decided to step down. I want to thank them for their, their service and their time, and I'd like to thank those people who did step up to volunteer and request, or just remind our Ward four, Ward five, that we still have some openings, and that we would love your assistance. And that's all I have.
Thank you. Mr. Barr?
One thing that did come out of Safety Committee tonight that we've, we've talked around up here is COVID-19, and what the city of Twinsburg is doing for it. All I can tell you is that we were presented with some information by Assistant Chief Basso tonight, who's a master of public information officer, one of a select few in the country to actually have received that certification. And his advice from the, the Ohio Department of Health and Summit County Board of Health, that he was actually at all day today, and will be teaching and instructing with all week this week, is that the best thing we can all do is to remain calm, look out for one another, wash our hands, pay special
pay special attention to those that are in an at-risk group, so over sixty underlying health conditions. I think personally, I would just say that we all need to be neighborly and look out for one another. We need to come together as a community. This situation, this virus, doesn't care whether you're rich, poor, black, white, male, female. It will affect all of us and all of our families uniquely. And I guess I would just ask for everybody to look out for one another, to be good citizens and good neighbors and good stewards of their community, like Twinsburg has shown in the past through many hardships that we've all endured together. But I would like to just stress again that the Fire Department, the schools, the Police Department, wastewater treatment, we are working to maintain continuity of services. There are, we're receiving daily briefings. The mayor's office is getting information as it becomes available, and we're all here to help answer any questions. So, you know, just look out for one another, be neighborly, and wash your hands. That's all I have.
Well said. Yeah, yeah, Mr. Barr said it very eloquently. The only thing I would add to that would be, if you're looking for information, make sure you're looking at reputable sources. Don't look on social media, don't look at, you know, go to the Summit County Public Health website, which is www.scp-h.org. Go to the Ohio Department of Health, which is odh ohio.gov. That's where you should be getting your information from. I have a couple other things I wanted to pass along this evening. First, I do need to make a motion that the city does not oppose the new liquor permit for Twinsburg Entertainment LLC DBA basement located on Darrow Road, and authorize the clerk to submit the form to the Ohio Division of Liquor Control. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Ms. McFerrin seconds. Any discussion?
This is the former RAV's location next to Twinsburg Beverage, I believe.
And it's called the basement?
DBA as basement, so I don't know if that's the name of the establishment or just of the LLC. Any further discussion? Shannon, please call the roll.
Mr. Bellin?
Yes.
Ms. McFerrin?
Yes.
Mr. Fury?
Yes.
Mrs. Walker?
Yes.
Mrs. Stoffer?
Yes.
Mr. Barr?
Yes.
That motion passes six to zero. I wanted to bring one thing to the attention of council. I have received several emails and phone calls concerning some residents about the land that's being cleared up at Wilcox Meadows just north of Belmar. There was some concern that the developer may have removed more trees than they should have, or, you know, and I'll be honest, when you drive by there, it does really look like they took everything down. So I talked with Amy Moore. They have confirmed that they have not gone any over the property line. That's just kind of how close the property lines are. They have also confirmed, though, that there is upwards of a hundred and eighty trees that are going to be going back into that facility, you know, before it's done, which is actually going to be, you know, when they're all grown out, is actually going to probably be more cover than was there before. So, you know, I understand that it does, it really does look awfully bare, especially, you know, as we're coming through there in the winter, and there's no, there's no leaves. But that is something that the Engineering Department and Amy's going to stay on top of as the progress continues. Everybody up here hit Saint Patrick's Day, so I will say ditto. Also, next Tuesday is Election Day, so I would like to remind everybody to get out and vote and to have your voices be heard. And finally, I would like to say happy belated birthday to Mrs. Walker.
Oh, thank you.
This past weekend. That's all I have. Mr. Maestros?
Nothing, thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. Collins?
Nothing, thank you.
Mrs. Butcher- Ross?
Nothing, thank you.
All right. That being said, the final order of business this evening, I lost my agenda. We need to, we need to excuse Mr. Scafidi, so I'd like to make a motion to allow him to excuse Mr. Scafidi. Is there a second?
I second.
Mrs. Walker seconds. Shannon, please call the roll.
Mr. Bellin?
Yes.
Mrs. Walker?
Yes.
Ms. McFerrin?
Yes.
Mr. Barr?
Yes.
Mrs. Stoffer?
Yes.